I inform Tricia the attachment that I sent earlier today when I was prepping for this evening. Had an error, so I have a copy.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And we can correct that. I'm gonna send Tricia PDA. Free tomorrow for inclusion in the meeting.
Wonderful, thanks. And if you need more copies, let me know. No, I think there's enough copies.
Hi Beth, we're gonna do overview of the capital project financing and then. All right, Chris, you ready?
Do we just wanna jump into that review?
Well, I just call the meeting to order and all that. But yeah.
Okay, I'll call the seven after, I'll call the meeting to order. Is he on?
Yeah.
E, all right. Okay. Here with me, Chris, in one second.
I'm on my way, Chris, I'm just on the road, I'll be there at five.
We're gonna.
No, no, that's a first full board meeting right there.
He said at five or away? All right.
No, I said in five.
All right. So, I don't think we have anyone for public comment. E, we'll go ahead and move, just approve of the minutes from the September 20th.
All right, I'm down.
You're good?
Uh, yep.
Eric's good? And if you're okay with it, we'll start with the overview. We'll skip around a little bit, we'll start with the overview from the budget for the project. You go with that, E?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll leave a copy there for him in case.
All right, thank you.
Because he has a hard question. Okay, so what you have in front of you is a master budget summary that we keep on a monthly basis. It gets updated with financials that occur on all of the phases of the projects, whether it's an updated estimate or a change order allowance authorization, bid award, what have you. So, for those that haven't seen this before, we start with the referendum amount of 120 million at the top of the first page. Incidental budgets are broken out for each of the phases here, equaling 20% typically of the total estimated amount of work. And those will get updated as the estimates update throughout the course of design. Under construction contracts awarded to date, we have awarded four phases so far. Phase one at 18.5 million, the high school roofing at 5.8, the middle school temperature controls at 1.6, and phase two at 23.1. Future phases that we have estimated, we were just talking about in the facilities committee. Phase three A1, which is the roof at Enfield, we have an estimate of 6.85 until we take bids. Phase three A.2, which is all of the facade work at Enfield, the canopies, the windows at DJM, we have an estimate of 3.3 million for that phase. Three B1 is the next very large phase, which is the STEM area here at the high school renovation and addition, as well as half of the campus HVAC upgrade. The amount of work required in that phase of HVAC upgrades is so extensive that we felt at OACM, it made sense to split that up into two phases. There are some max cost allowance considerations as well that need to roll off before we commit to additional contracts to make sure that the district's aid is maximized. That was also an indication of why we needed to split that up. But as you can see right now, it's 31 million. I think that because we've only done a conceptual, which included both phases, we're going to be doing an estimate review reconciliation with Tetra Tech on Thursday of three B1. So that number will get modified and we'll move whatever the variance is down to three B2.
Cindy, I wanna just pause for a second. So campus construction, those of you that went on the tour, that's field manager side of the operations, the construction management side. Campus construction also, we contract with them to do all the estimation services, right? So the design, Chris does, he does a budget as Jason, who is with campus construction, teased and says, he's a terrible estimator, right? Chris is talented in so many things, right? But Jason's the one that knows like industry standards and trends and he's tracking bidding, right, all over the state and different projects. So that this is, there's a fluidity sort of to this estimation, but there's an entire division in campus construction of their operations that does estimation. So Jason attends, he's the representative from campus that attends our design development meetings, right, to be able to listen and is constantly sort of saying, oh, you want, you changed it from this material to that material, or you wanna do this, you wanna, right, he's constantly updating that estimation. So I just wanted to jump in Cindy around the process of how we sort of get to these numbers on paper.
Yeah. Yes, and at this point, as you can see, it's a conceptual estimate, which was very early in the designing, so it was grand ideas of what we wanted to do, 10,000 foot level, if you will, and we're bringing that down in this next estimate. So we'll be able to bring that into a finer point. About 60% design, 65% design complete. So we know there's still gonna be movement when we get to that last estimate before it goes to SE, or when it goes to SED. And then, of course, bidding environment can be above or below that estimate depending upon the environment at the time we bid. So, the last number at the bottom of the page shows you the total construction dollars planned to date. So we've allocated, I won't say committed, but allocated 90.4 million of the 120. And that's just in construction. Then you have to add the 7.8 million in soft costs or incidental budgets at the top. And if you look at the red line on the second page, we have about 4.5 million dollars remaining in the 120 million dollar referendum. And we've now begun to plan or design phase three B2. That 4.5 million on a smaller project, Emily and Sydney can probably attest, is a lot of money at this point. But on 120 million dollar referendum, it's not. And with the work we have before us, we anticipate that most of that could get eaten up as we move through the phasing of the design and estimating on these last two large phases of the project. We may have a small amount remaining after we bid phase three B2 that could be used what we call as a wish list or cleanup phase for those smaller, critical kinds of things that we can cover with the amount of dollars we have left.
And Cindy, give us a timeline in terms of the schedule, best case, worst case, for three B2 to be complete.
With the discussions of holding up a year where we've been bidding, like every 18 months or so, two years, holding that off a year because of the MCAs, we would anticipate work start on three B2 in '26 and complete in '27 or early '28.
And you said a number on that was maybe potentially left for cleanup, what was the term you used?
Yeah, a cleanup phase, Dr. Brown. It's just either a wish list of things that you might have.
And how much were you mentioning?
Well, right now, we're showing 4.5 million that's unallocated.
That's that number.
But that's not a hard number.
Yeah, of course.
Right, yeah.
And just to get a full sense, that cleanup is pretty important. We did our wireless infrastructure, our network upgrade, and electronic whiteboards with cleanup money is the last time. And we did some other projects too, but those are the three that came to mind, which were transformative to our approach to teaching and learning. That's a big number and an important number. I like to keep that as a big account.
Yeah, and the other number I just wanna call attention to is at the bottom of the second page in blue is 1.2 million. That's allowance money that is part of the contracts already bid and awarded that has not been spent. A large portion of that, 896,000, is phase two. So, maybe 400,000 dollars of that money will go back into the 4.5, so you'd be closer to 5 million when we're done with phase one, the high school roof and middle school temperature controls, we have all the contracts closed out. All of those unspent allowances go back into the unallocated dollars. That's why that 4.5, that red line, is constantly moving until we get done with the project. Any questions on where we're at currently?
So, you were giving the example of cleanup money used to for some technology, but there's the possibility we may not have any cleanup money in this.
There is that possibility.
So, and I gather that costs may have increased after the pandemic and everything. So where we were in 2019 is totally then where we are now.
Correct.
And do we know how much by that increase, like what?
I'd have to check with my estimators, but I think they mentioned when we were bidding phase two and in some of our operations meetings, I think they've seen markets go up 20% across the board on average, some higher, some lower, but some really high to give us that average. And they are starting to see, they've had six bids, I think, six projects that bid here recently, September and October, and they are starting to see the numbers come down a little bit, more in line, but still above estimates that were done two, two and a half years ago. That's why we always do a check-in with our estimators as we're approaching a bid, Karen, just to have them check their numbers. And why, when we bid the, which I didn't mention, the Bell Sherman Elementary School boiler replacement here recently, our estimator, Jason, he bumped that from 175,000 dollar estimate to 215 because of the market, and actually, our number came in at 169.7, so that's an example of where we are. However, I would put a caveat on that, that our low bidder is a hungry bidder right now, does not have a lot of work on the books. And so, we had other numbers, our highest number, I think, was 263,000. So, there was a wide spread there. He's already here doing work for us on phase two. He's a contractor that the district likes to use for facilities support work. So, you know, he did a very good job with his number to ensure that he maintained his relationship here at the district.
So the what if, what if we reach that amount?
We can't go over that amount. And if we see that, when we bid, the telltale for us will be when we bid three A, or three B1, the STEM and the first part of the HVAC work, we'll see what that does. Is it approximately half of that 31 million? Is it more, is it less? And then, when we go to bid three B2, we'll make sure, as Emily and Sydney have probably done in their projects, that we have alternates identified so that when we take the bids, if we're over, we can back out scope of work. If we have more money available to us than we think when we get bids, we can add work. So, we'll make sure, we haven't had to do that so far because we still had the majority of the referendum available to us, that last phase will be much more critiqued when we go to bid to ensure that we can hit those numbers and not have to re-bid.
But never lets it happen with anything. So we're rewarding.
Never, never.
So that, I mean, the other, the other side of it, right, is how we pay for it and our work with fiscal advisors in terms of managing the financing, right? So, we received some really great news from our fiscal advisors. If you remember last year, was it last year or two years ago, we made, we came to the finance committee and we discussed, should we continue to have a ban, right, which is an anticipation notice, it's five years, right? There was a certain interest rate for a short-term borrowing of about 25 million dollars, I think it was. Or, at the time, we were looking at the market saying, should we go to a bond, which is long-term, right? 15 years, and so what were the interest rates difference for that? And we, at the time, took what we felt was the calculated right decision, I guess some would call it a risk, and not do the short-term ban and go into the bond and actually purchase long-range financing, right, 15 years worth. Our fiscal advisors, when we met with them last two weeks ago, said that that choice that we made saved us interest payments of about 7 million dollars. It was about 7 million dollars to make that choice. So, to the debt service line, right, that was going, that's more principal, less interest. That was really positive work for us. We, next month, will be bringing fiscal advisors in. We have the same situation happening, right? We have short-term financing, we've been doing, right, 20 million, 25 million chunks, right, to cover work. The conversation for next month will be looking at the financing side of things, right? The budget side of things for the taxpayers and for us as the district to pay for this. Do we want to go with the bams, which is the short-term, renew that, right, that five-year course? Or look at long-term financing through the state program, which is DASME, right? So we went independently to go for a bond, this would actually be through the state program. Right now, because of the market forces, that's the best situation by a couple of hundred thousands. And he's gonna show us some charts about that. So we'll make another calculated decision about what we wanna do on how to pay for this money from the financing side. So that'll be next month. So Cindy sort of shows you where we are, but all that, all that study around like how we actually, right, will bond or ban or DASME for this, we'll be discussing as well. So now you get a sense of sort of where the money's going, how it's been allocated, but then there's also the projects that we're paying each time it's submitted, right? The millions of dollars that are coming our way for the work that's being done. So those two things will work in tandem.
Eldred actually just pointed out to me when he looked at the study, the total change orders pending and remembering the first time he went out, and he said that was a fraction, I think it was like 3.5 million in change orders.
Yeah.
But we have a.
This is, this is where I will honor Paul and say we lost our historian that could've told us every story about every one of those, right?
We know how to count though.
But this will make. We also have the project manager in place.
I mean, again, thank you. Thank you.
Makes me very.
I'm glad we're, we're doing a good job for you.
Exactly, we're all set, I mean, you know, every dime we can save towards the end here, we don't know what magic you can work with.
We had to have a separate meeting just to manage the capital project. If you have a thing like this, yeah.
It was subcommittee.
Yeah, well, subcommittee of this committee, and then.
You were gonna say something, Karen.
Yeah, what is the date, 7/31 on?
That's, I just didn't update it.
Oh, okay.
This is an Excel document, it was, no one's hidden, Karen, I'll get it.
We're gonna eliminate it right now.
The numbers moved.
All right.
That's all.
Well, this, Cindy, thank you. I think it's, you know, we don't, I appreciate the two committees coming together. I think it makes sense, right, because it really does straddle those committees, so.
And I'd like to also add that this is in every monthly report that we issue at the head of the financial section. And then behind it, we have budget summaries per phase, which I'll feed into this. But there's a little bit more detail on each one of those individual budget summaries. So that information is available to you on a monthly basis. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest.
Thank you, Cindy.
You too. All right, so we'll move to the consideration of accounts and we've got. Treasurers report for August.
It's tax season. Emily's very happy now.
We get our budget.
Yeah. Do you wanna, do you want Tricia to bring it up on the screen and go over it?
You can, there's really not too, I mean, this is August, so August was where we basically scraped the bottom of the barrel.
See our low.
Yeah, it's August and into September because like unlike most districts who start collecting taxes on September 1st, small city starts on October 1st. So we have that, and of course, the teachers are coming back and our payroll is jumping from the small amounts that it was over the summer to another three, close to 3 million dollars. And so, it is, so there's not much to talk about on this treasures report because it really is, we are slowly hitting our low. You'll see September is when it comes out and it'll even be less. And then, all of a sudden, October pops in and we start getting our tax money. We get our state aid on September 30th, so you will see a little bit of a leap when we see Septembers. But August, there's really not much to tell. We just start working on planning as we go forward. The nice thing is, I've been talking to Alex these last couple days from three plus one, treasury notes are bringing in 4.15%, so I am quickly moving money out of our tax collection. I mean, I'm jumping ahead a few months, but it's the here and now, what's going on in our office. So, we are taking advantage of those higher rates and locking in on six-month treasury notes, which will give us a little bit more in our interest than what we've had these last couple years. So, a lot of planning right now, going out with Alex, and, but not much to talk about this. I don't like August, I don't like September.
Alex, Alex will be here next month as well. So we actually did find, because you, you want fiscal advisors and three plus one to be in the room at the same time because it's, you know, as we bring money in, there are ways, you know, as long as we stay within the parameters, to be able to invest those funds as well. So, you know, it's really good to have your kind of financial advisor for the, for the debt service piece with your financial advisor for the interest rate piece to kinda, you know, be in the room together.
So your revenue and expenses talk to each other.
We co-hoot as much as we can, that's right.
And I say this every meeting, but just if you look at the treasurer's report, Emily is so kind to put a brief synopsis of the month. So, you know, in everyday terms, where the money went, 7 million, it carries through September as we wait for new money to begin flowing. So, this was something we implemented two years ago?
And it's probably the most difficult piece of my treasurer's report is trying to come up with something that is, that is productive for you guys to hear from me, so. But I'm glad it is helpful to you.
It is very helpful, and it's actually helpful to refer people to, and it's, you can follow it, and you can actually follow it month to month and understand where the money's going, how the months flow, and understanding whether we're up or down and why. So, because when you look at the report, if you don't look at it every, you know, regularly and work with it like you do, it's like, okay, we got a lot of money, we got a little bit of money. And it always looks like big numbers, you know, but as we run our business, it changes.
That was a, it was a very good idea to do those.
So, we also have, so we've got some transfers in tune of 300, in total of four transfers, 328,000 dollars, which is just a regular occurrence. They're not really broken out, but any questions about that? All right. It's very long, so we need to elect a chairperson, I think we've pushed this along. So.
I nominate Chris Malcolm. Star War leader of the finance committee, 2022, 20th school. Early second.
I mean, I will second if you're comfortable with it. All right, second.
Honestly, I just talked to Amanda. I take zero credit, Amanda and Emily and the team just do an awesome job. We just talk together, so.
Thank you. All right. So we'll move to the school nutrition discussion.
Hello.
Hello.
So, I received the article from Saratoga Springs. I've looked into it and I have not received any phone calls back from their district at all. They were supposed to vote last week, I have not heard anything back. I emailed the director, I've called him three times and I haven't heard anything yet, so.
So just to back up to put everyone in, we reached out because Saratoga Springs voted to, well, was looking into continuing free lunch in their schools through 2022, 2023, and our question was, can we do this and if so, how? So that's where this, this conversation came up.
Yes. Also, I've checked their website and I haven't seen anything about it either. So, I did some investigation and federal USDA money significantly points the school meal program through reimbursements. Per every free reduced in full-price meal served, the reimbursements are different through each category. Our school lunch program revenue is estimated budget is about 3 million dollars. 62% of it is the meal reimbursement, 34% is student and adult sales, 2% is state meal reimbursement, 1% is the transfer from general fund, and 1% is miscellaneous donations and interest income. We also get USDA food, which is possibly 257,000 dollars in government commodities. We get brown box and we also get Department of Defense food, which is fruits and vegetables. I've allocated over 120,000 dollars just to the fresh produce this year out of this 250,000, 257,000, and that's all our fresh produce. We spend about, down on that, about 4,000 dollars a week on fresh produce from the DOD, plus we get others off of bids. We use a lot of fresh produce here. Legal uses of school lunch fund balance per SED guidelines do not include providing a universal free lunch program. ICSD does not want to jeopardize future federal money that subsidizes the school lunch fund because it's worth so much money. So, we were in support of the anti-shaming lunch legislation, which was adopted in 2017 per New York State requirements, but it's wonderful. Forgiveness of all negative balances in families and community is what we would like to do. Members could pay it forward by donating and covering student negative balances and work with a communication team to support communication and PTA and community. So right now, our cashiers do not say anything, even at the high school level, they're not supposed to say anything, I've actually watched them. If a student says, oh, I'm worried about funds, they're like, it's okay, it's okay. You know, guardians and parents worry about your funds for your meals. So we don't really have a problem. The only thing is that we, if there is, you know, funds in there, they can't buy à la carte. And again, that's USDA law.
So Beth, is it okay if I jump in a little bit?
Sure.
So Beth did such a great job of trying to research like the how to get yes, so she reached out to the USDA folks and then she reached out to Saratoga Springs. At the same time, when we had a meeting, we reached out to legal and we also reached out to our auditors. And Sydney did a lot of work on that, trying to sort of figure out how we could get you to yes. And it may not be the type of yes that got the splash of publicity that Saratoga Springs received. And that might not actually be a bad thing considering what we heard from legal, right? So, Cindy, I don't know if you wanna talk about sort of the auditor and legal with the gift of public funds and, and so how we maybe did the workaround.
So, it's a little bit of a gray area. You know, legal and our auditors both agree that simply going to a universal feeding and not charging any amount of money is jeopardizing that federal money. That money comes in. That that money comes in through USDA, through those federal meal reimbursements for every meal that's served, whether it's free reduced or whole price. We get an amount from USDA that is funding to the tune of one point eight six million dollars of the three million dollar budget. So if we lose that because we choose to um provide universal free lunch and that is technically, that's not allowed under USDA um guidelines and under SED guidelines, then that means that we would have to pick up one point eight six million dollars in the general fund. Right now, we have a transfer to school lunch fund line in the budget, it's around thirty thousand dollars. So that would grow one point eight six million dollars in order to fund this because we would lose that, we would jeopardize that USDA funding.
Right, so so we're trying, we want to get you the yes. So what are Beth's proposal and we came up with a sort of as a group and we think this is a really good pathway. We already have policy, it's the anti-lunch shaming policy. We already, the school nutrition program already um is not collecting balances at the end of the year. There are districts that send those to like small claims, they utilize uh collection agencies. We would never do that and in fact, what we recommend to the board is that we even make that a bit more robust. So families actually receive regular communication, whether it's via email or phone calls saying you have a balance, right? You're in, you know, you you're at a deficit, whatever that might look like. We are, we are fine with eliminating those reminders and essentially through our community partners like PTAs, our principals, our teachers, our food service saying, if you're hungry, eat. Right? And those balances at the end of the year, just like we would with food service, what Sydney was describing, we have mechanisms to make the food service program whole. Right? Either through their own fund balance or through transfers from the general fund. So instead of front ending like Saratoga's doing, right, with the like, we're gonna make, we're saying, use the policy that you have, make it, enhance it and allow for young people to eat as they see the need to. It also takes the other political pressure, and we are finding this out from our legal as well. The political pressure, this could divide communities, right, because there are still people like, I I do want to pay, right? Like I actually can afford it and in fact, I want to pay for other kids, right? So this actually takes that both and and we we feel that this is like a really good opportunity to educate folks about filling out, right, the the forms. We're actually looking at perhaps maybe even creating easier ways for people to complete those forms, more communication about free and reduced lunch opportunities.
Sure.
And then also this idea of this forgiveness, right, of the balance and it's not even forgiveness, it's just ignoring the balance, right? When you're not getting anything for us, we're just not gonna do anything about it if you have a balance. So we'd love to hear your thoughts, we tried to get you yes.
No, thank, thank you very much because that that makes me hopeful, I guess.
Legally.
My only question, we we know the resources run the gambit in Dillica, right? So for folks, when you look, what's the price for breakfast lunch, two sixty five per meal? Um, so the people who fall into gaps, I did the math, you know, and if you have three kids who are going to school and they're all, you know, getting breakfast and lunch, you you at the end of the month, you just have an additional bill of almost three hundred dollars a month. So now you're going into, gas prices are up, heating is up, food prices are up, and now you have a new three hundred dollar bill. So is, would it be beneficial if we do reduce that just to make it more palatable? Because we still know that, you know, for the majority, for a large portion of our students, that is when they're eating, you know. We are providing the major meals for them throughout the day.
So we could charge a dollar and that would fulfill the grant provided.
They, the USDA sets a price, let someone or Beth help me out around three FD per per lunch.
Price, yeah.
And if we are below that, which we we are below that.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure, you're on that, you're on that last one.
And and we voted not, we got, we've decided not to increase this year.
Right, and that's okay, that's what, you know, what's important.
That's right, that's right, so we're below the the calculator.
Yeah.
But what USDA says is if you're below that set amount, then the general fund must make that up through local funds, which we have. And we've contributed for many years and we have an accumulated balance, but if you were at ten cents, then I think that.
We decided to contribute, but there's no indication of clause that says how much, with, yeah, you can go as low as you wish, as long as you're prepared to transfer from the general fund. As long as we're charging some.
So in other words, it's kind of waiting to be a to capture it all, is there a way to subsidize it as we go along? So Chris is saying, so the people on the on the low end aren't even in a position where they're like, oh god, I have this bill.
Well, it's really the people in the middle who are gonna get the subsidies.
That's right, that's right, people in the middle.
So my, so my wondering is I think part of the recommendation that we have is walking the communication tightrope of alerting and communicating out to families. Essentially saying like what you're saying, right, like that that we're making, we're making this affordable, and I'm gonna use that word, right? Affordable meaning zero or pay what you can, right? And we would like to run that communication through legal so that we are not putting USDA funds into jeopardy. Right, and so to your point after round, like can we charge something? I think the the worry or I think the reality of USDA funding is anything you do in this year impacts you in the years.
Us or them?
Uh uh us, in the city school district.
Yeah, I I get, but but if the board was to ask us to make lunches free and we are saying that we can't because it's a government fund, we can then determine what we charge them and recharge everyone fifty cents. That even eases the communication, we're not trying to play this game about what we can't, lunch is fifty cents. Let's just start there, that if we were to say that, would that get us in trouble legally, with USDA or anyone else? Because I think that would, if the board was asking us to do that.
Right, right.
Um.
And the subsidy would be contemporaneous as opposed to way on the back end, so.
Yeah. Boy, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta define over what.
If you, if we decide to go fifty cents, then every meal would be occurring a deficit, right? So that money would be.
Then we go back to the general fund and then we have to.
Would be coming out of the general fund.
And even that is, yes, we have to make sure that it's accounted for in the general fund to offset that.
That's right, as we go.
But not even that, it would, could, some folks may pay more if it's fifty cent and so we wouldn't know if it would be a deficit until we would do our transfer, whatever that would be.
Well, that's true, some people will still pay.
Yes.
Yes, and this community, a lot of people probably still pay a three fifty.
And that's also such a great job of catering and all the other things you do.
Right.
I mean, we wouldn't, we would have to do this, do this analysis over a year to see how much of a deficit we leave out here.
So um I I have a few questions, just can we say lunch is fifty cents, but then everyone will, like if you charge fifty cents and people have auto on their accounts, then people won't be able to pay more.
Right.
Yeah.
Unless they send checks to her.
Yeah, that's how.
This is going. It's it's a lot more.
Navigating that for the, so.
That's why we've been recommending really enhancing the policy that you already have in place.
So I have another question because I I just had this happen with one of my children where they wrapped up a bill because they didn't realize, like even though I said lunches aren't free, they were just getting them. So, I mean, and then I got this letter saying you have to pay this and what if that letter were to say paying this is optional? Is there a way to let families know that payment is optional because this letter did not really indicate that.
No, and that's what we thought, we would up the communication and just turn off the the telephone call tells, yes.
Yes.
Turn, you actually won't get the letter.
No, you wouldn't get the letter.
You won't get the letter, like that's, so Erin, and again, I'm, we're walking the tightrope of not losing our USDA funds and and doing something that's not a gift.
Because it, we are not required to send the letter, correct?
That, we are not going to send, we are not going to send the letter.
Can I, can I, I wanna, I wanna point something out on the other end of this though, right? For families that don't have you also have an issue where parents need to know what their children are eating, like if there are health issues and they shouldn't be eating school lunch.
That's why you can still go in the system, Erin, right?
So that's why like we're updating the system as of November first, so it's gonna be.
Because we still need kids, we need data.
Right.
You need data as a parent, we need data as a school district, alright?
Right.
So that's the other part of like the positive of this approach is that nothing changes at the point of sale. Right, a kid goes up, they type in their number or they like they give their name and it's tracked, so you as a parent could go in, you could see, oh my gosh, they're eating like three cookies, right, whatever it is. Um and and then you find out they gave it to all their friends, right, and it's like, great, okay, right? And if I can pay for it, I pay for it and if I, if I forget, I'm not gonna get the letter and if I, right, and nobody's going, there's like less, less pressure to pay, but the data set is still there, alright? We still can get reimbursed for free and reduced lunch students from the USDA because we have the data, we have the swi, like the swipes or the 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 opportunity to be able to know who went through the lunch line. So that's why again, like the, we really tried to find a method that got you to where you needed to be without putting us in jeopardy of the USDA and also keeping parents informed, right?
Okay.
That data, by the way, feeds into so many things.
Oh my gosh.
It it um affects our state aid, it affects our Title I allocations.
State aid.
That's right.
That free and reduced, those free and reduced counts are, you know, used in myriad of ways by the state. So we sort of lost out on that data during COVID times because everything was free and it has a, you know, it affects our Title I allocation, so it's really going to be nice to have that data back so that we can be serving the, you know, kids in our community the most.
And we can celebrate the support of families at the end of the year. Versus like Saratoga doing it at the beginning, right, like we're gonna do it at the end, like, oh, we've made a transfer from general fund of this much to support the school lunch program.
So, okay, and now.
Young people to eat.
What, so what we're struggling with here is how we're gonna communicate this now, so.
I would recommend that the, that we don't do the struggle, that legal and the communications team, right?
Okay.
Come up with some options that we could then um, we can like even just do it via email so that you have an awareness of what's going out, give some feedback to that, right? But I would definitely recommend that everything that we, that the communication team would put out, they work in coordination with the legal team. So then that way we know that what we're saying is not too much, it's just right, it runs that sort of like that middle.
But it will indicate to families, this is a huge relief for them, given inflation.
And it also gives the option.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So people can afford to pay, they can, and if they can, if there's a struggle, wherever they don't have it, they will not be billed and it will be forgiven. So.
Absolutely.
We're feeding the kids.
Feeding the kids.
Most important thing.
Yes.
Question about this, I, so if a family wants to pay and can't afford to pay, to pay.
It's that can.
Yes, they can, then they won't be getting, I'm thinking back here to Greg's lunches.
Yes, yes, they.
And that was, I I waited for the letter to pay because I didn't have my act together enough to send him with money.
Yeah.
And he was getting three cookies every day and giving them away and all of that, so.
Right, I like, Jill, I'm with you, so I would, the reminders were really helpful and I think that
Yeah. Yeah.
Part of the communication that we can include is if it's helpful for you to receive the reminders, we can continue to do that. Um, because I think in the system, we can probably figure out a way to be able to send the forgetful parent like I was, right, the note, and I would want to have been able to pay for my kid and perhaps her feeding of her food. Like, I was okay with that, right? So I I would have wanted that letter, right? Um, and and because I would forget otherwise, so.
So that, you you think that's a possibility to
I I think that is.
retain that aspect of it, the informational.
Yes, so you opt in, right, you opt in at the level of that.
Yeah. I I also think um you know, I'm thinking of behavioral like economic sorts of issues here and I'm I'm thinking that over and over again, it's been shown that people appreciate things that they know that that they've gotten, okay, so it's like if you, if you get a letter at the end of the month saying you don't have to pay this, but your kid got eighty five dollars worth of lunch this month, you appreciate that, whereas if you get, you don't get a letter, it's just like, oh, well, it's it's one other thing and it seems to me that
Looks like out of sight, out of mind, if you don't know, if you're not aware of it, you can't appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm and I'm not saying people have to, you know, they don't have to grovel their thanks, but I think people should be aware of what resources are being used for their benefit.
I like that idea, yeah.
Jill, I. It's a celebration, right, it's a celebration of community.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially with as much as we pay on our taxes here, right?
Well, and frankly, as a taxpayer, I know people would, would want people to know that that was going to them.
Yeah.
I I think that that's a beautiful addition to the idea, the spirit of what we're trying to.
Okay, you know, I didn't want to work against that, I I was feeling some unease about the whole thing and I think that is what it was.
And and also the piece to this is, this does not have to be permanent, we can be fluid with this and then review it, you know, next year and then change it as needed.
Sure.
So we're not locked in by any means.
And I'm just gonna add to that, President Biden put into, he's putting into policy hopefully to reduce the CEP requirements. So right now we have two buildings on CEP.
That's right.
And that's Anfield and BGM. If he reduces the requirements to near to thirty eight percent, because we're we're right at the thirty eight percent and the guidelines require forty percent at this point, if the requirements are reduced before April first, which hopefully he's been talking about it and things just haven't moved in New York state yet, I don't know how it all goes down. A lot more buildings will be CEP.
That's right.
I'm really, really hoping that.
Wait, a lot, which, how many other buildings here would be met?
South Hill, Caroline.
Um, uh, yeah, I could look at the, some are very, very close. See, Annex is at forty three percent, Bel Sherman's thirty five percent, Caroline's at thirty eight percent.
Two buildings.
Car, Caruga Heights is at thirty six percent, Fall Creek is at thirty six percent, twenty eight percent Northeast, twenty four percent South Hill. And then the other, the middles are out at near forty percent right now, so it has to be as April first is the guidelines, and the high school's at twenty eight percent. So what we should do is get our community to fill out those free and reduced forms, get on SNAP, be eligible for things, the people who really need it, do a whole push. Um, it's hard to do it at open houses, I did it once and the applications are are yellow or orange or bright color and people walking away. And they do get a mailing also at home, but we could do a great push on somehow get communications to fill out these applications.
And I think we do like all of the above.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so how are you feeling? I I'm sorry that we couldn't do like, like the, oh yeah, that's easy, but I think, like there were some speed bumps
No.
and we just navigated those.
I I feel good with the way we're moving forward, I I like the fact that it's an option. Emotional processing as well.
Well, currently on a monthly basis, when do you get a letter if you've reached like negative twenty dollars, it used to be that.
It used to be a daily phone call at a school messenger and there has been a file transfer and we're changing systems. That phone call will never go out on with this. Um, the letters are normally done well with September because the free and reduced extends to October, we start the letters in October and you would probably get the letter like once a month, October, November, December, we just hit the button and it presses it out. We won't have to do that anymore. We won't send the letters unless we say, we reword the letter and say, we're legal.
I I I like the idea of sending a letter and rewording it. You know, I think it's also respectful to folks
Mm-hmm.
to have the option.
I love that.
Thoughts?
Brilliant, brilliant.
I like that idea, just one other question, uh, not to sideline this, but one other question. So um, we know our legal counsel is pretty well respected, handles lots of clients. Has Kate not been able to get in touch with Saratoga Springs attorney?
Maybe they're not, they are not talking about it with other districts.
Ah, that's all I need.
Get us in trouble.
To, at this point in time, we have not had any success, no one has had success.
Yeah, do we know what Saratoga Springs percentage is? Enough free reduced.
Um, percentage is twenty five percent district wide, where we're at forty percent district wide.
It wasn't. Twenty five percent.
Yeah, I can find it up the ass though.
We got gag going on this one, yeah.
So we'll put it on the agenda for next finance, we'll have the, we'll have some language and understand where we're at.
I think if you can give us that time, I mean, we're just gonna, really, there's no forward action because we're just, we're using a policy that's already in place. And then what we're doing is we're giving you some communications options, so we'll have to invite. And then what we're doing is we're giving you some communications options. So we'll have to invite Katie or Margot, I think, to join us at the next meeting. I'm seeing Lily shake her head. Thank you, Lily. If you don't want to, you can get them invited.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thanks, Erica. I really
Oh, thank you.
appreciate the creativity that you allow us to, uh, to bring you some options. So thanks. Thank you, Beth, for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Beth. Anything to add with that or?
Well, I'll keep you updated. I do have an, uh, school lunch conference this weekend for, uh, New York State. So I'll keep you updated if anything's new politically or.
On a side note, I remember last year, are we still getting a lot of stuff from Maine's or Cisco?
Um, Cisco is our OGS government that, um, so for the last.
They're on strike, right?
They were.
They run on strike for three weeks.
Yeah.
We got an email yesterday that they're off strike and we will be getting deliveries next week. So if you've seen some menu changes, it's been very minor because we also had Palmer's of Rochester in the next few weeks. Um, the menu changes may go out until next week, but yeah, we, we're, we're back at business.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Erica.
Thank you.
All right, we discussed at the last, like facility, so the sixteenth of November, yeah?
So it's a Thursday.
The Thursday, yes. So everybody good with that? Eight, it'll be a Thursday, not a Tuesday.
I think I'm in Boston. Um, so it might be a little breakable. But yeah, I'm okay with that.
So.
November seventh.
November, wait.
It's seventeenth is Thursday, so.
Sir. For November? Did we say, was that the February joint one? I'm sorry, I mixed up two dates.
Yeah, the February twenty twenty-three is February sixteenth.
Twenty twenty-sixteenth, I'm sorry. So November is just, we're good as far as the date on Tuesday. I apologize.
Yeah. No, not Tuesday, it's a Thursday.
It's Thursday, seventeenth.
I did, okay, I read that right. I'm sorry.
Yeah. But February is in the future.
No, we're just talking about agenda setting.
Right. Oh, okay.
Yes.
So, oh, well, seven point one is February, right?
Mm-hmm.
What is, what is that, or did that, should that have been November?
That's what I put there. Yeah, so the update was to discuss the date for the February eighteenth, sorry, February twenty twenty-three joint meeting.
Oh.
That's what it was. Okay, now, I won't jump around anymore. So I'll go with that. And then we'll talk about the November, um, discussion, seventeenth discussion. Right, Amanda? Sorry.
I'm sorry. So we were just trying, I apologize, we had a sidebar because, um, our, uh, association's conference is the week of November. Um, and, but we will be back on the seventeenth. We, so we were worried, but we will be back on the seventeenth. And then Chris, you asked me a question and I am so sorry that I was talking to my neighbor.
No, no, we were just talking about other items, other items for, uh, agenda setting. And I know we spoke about, one, um, getting with, uh, HR just to discuss finance and HR around recruitment and retention expenses and needs. And I'm forgetting one other thing. Did you have, um, we also, oh, we're, we're gonna have, um, fiscal advisors, right?
Yep, so we have a three plus one and fiscal advisors.
Yes.
And then we'll have a communication update about the anti-lunch, uh, the anti-shaming.
Yeah.
Right? And then, um, December, we have health benefits.
Mm-hmm.
And that might be a nice time to bring in HR because benefits really is
Yeah, yeah.
part of the HR group. And so maybe we could expand that topic and just think about, um, both active and retiree. Uh, and in terms of the, like, you know, the, the work that happens jointly between HR and the business office. How about?
Sounds good. Yes. Did you have anything?
I actually have a question because I'm dealing with this on, uh, with work. Does the extension, does the public health emergency, Amanda, impact us in any way?
Yeah.
And so that extension looks like it's going to end as of January. So can you tell us?
Wait, so which one are you talking, wait, Erin, which one are you speaking to?
The federal public health emergency.
Um, is that, so that's not the, the payments that you're talking about for folks that were essentially like on the frontline?
No, it's not the, it's just the public health emergency, the ninety-day period. I think it has more to do with Medicaid, but does that impact our families or our finances at all? It's, it's basically not having to renew Medicaid?
I have not heard anything from, so that would impact special ed and I haven't received any notices
Okay.
at all from special education. What I thought you were referring to was the payments to workforce
Right.
who, right, were essentially like frontline staff and they get that extra benefit.
Mm-hmm.
And so we actually just received in the past two days, Department of Health finally caught up to State Education Department to be able to give us guidance about the titles that apply to school districts on their list. And so we're actually working in communication to all of our staff members that that applies to right now. So people can get up to like three thousand dollar benefit, right? So we're working, there's a whole team of us, Carrie Berg and, and Bob and Sydney, myself, um, attorneys from BS and K that are supporting it. And then the Business Officials Network. So that's, I apologize, that's what I thought you were referring to. And that does apply to us.
Oh, no. I mean, it's all confusing. I, um, yeah, I think the public health emergency, the main thing was that would be from, from, from what I understand is that people, if they don't reapply for Medicaid, could potentially lose it. They haven't had to reapply for it for like three years.
Oh.
So it could, it could impact some of our numbers, actually.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Because if you, it's the eligibility. You've just automatically been eligible every year.
Sure. Yeah.
And now you have to reapply.
Let me, I will check the special ed one.
Yeah. Because that also affects school lunches.
And you got.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah.
Those people come through as direct cert through the state, um, and they automatically are free, um, for school lunch. So yeah, that would, that would probably affect a lot of people if they had to apply and they don't realize they have to apply.
That could be a publication that we would put out then too as well. Yeah.
Thanks, Erin.
It's through March twenty, no, sorry, no, this is outdated. I think it's January. It's extended through January.
There you go.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. Good evening, folks. This meeting is ending.
Wow. Thanks, Erica.
See y'all. Thank you.